I'm here this morning, I'd like to say a special welcome to Commissioner Karski on his, what, 29th birthday?
Something like that.
Yes, something like that. We'll all rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance. [Inaudible] I'd also like to know that Commissioner Benega had to go to a meeting quickly and he'll probably be joining us in a few minutes, but we're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down in the end next to Commissioner Karski. And Craig is here today if you need a listening device. Takes us to our first item under Routine Business, I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from April 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is entertain a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $505,943.52.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There's several reports there that I come in for your review, Mobile Crisis Team Annual Stats, really very interesting numbers about the great work that the Mobile Crisis Team does. There's also a Minnehaha County Coroner Report that I'd also recommend for your review. Takes us to personnel items, I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning Carrie, from Human Resources. I have a fairly short, but pretty impressive list of individuals celebrating significant employee anniversaries in May. We have Dan Kissler from Planning celebrating five years, Andrea Kelly from the jail celebrating 10, Mike Miller from the Public Defender's Office, and Mike Brendan from the Sheriff's Office, both celebrating 15 years of service. And celebrating 20 years of service, we have Tracy Smith at the Public Defender's Office and Randy Sample at the State's Attorney's Office.
Lots and lots of wonderful years of experience. I don't see any of those folks here today, but we'd certainly like to congratulate them and thank them for all the work that they've done.
And the next item I have for you is the monthly record of our county volunteers. And for April, we had 262 volunteers.
Another thing to be very thankful for, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to, our next item is abatements, there are none. Next item is notice and requests. First item is to authorize the auditor to publish notice for bidders for jail kitchen equipment. Warden Gromer, you've got several for us this morning.
I do, I've just got three of them. Just looking for authorization to publish those solicitations for bids for the three separate items. The kitchen equipment, this goes along with the jail expansion project. As we increase the number of beds and the space available, we just need to upgrade some of the equipment in the kitchen. The second one is for inmate furniture for the expanded portions of the jail, that's just the inmate tables and chairs and totes for their property. Those are furniture items. We have a lot of them in the current jail now, and this is just for, to purchase additional of those items. And then the last one is, this isn't for a single purchase, this would be for a two-year contract with various vendors to supply our inmate clothing, bedding, and linens and things of that nature.
Are there any questions for Warden Gromer?
I'd make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish a notice to bidders on all three items, 7A, B, and C.
Second.
Want to make sure that the auditor, okay if we do this as one motion? Yep. Are you okay with that as one motion? Okay. So we have a motion and a second to authorize the auditor to publish a notice for those three different bids, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. And that takes us to public comment. Warden Gromer, do you have one? I'm sorry.
I probably should have submitted a agenda item for this. I just wanted to mention to the commission that it is Corrections Officers Week this week, and I just wanted to recognize the COs that work in the jail for just a moment. That group of people has an incredibly difficult job, and they are working inside the facility 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with some of the toughest people we have to deal with in our community. So, this week, it was 1984, I think President Reagan made a proclamation to make the first week, first full week of May, this Corrections Officers Week. And I just wanted to mention to the commission that it is this week, and recognize my staff for the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank them.
It is incredible work. And on a similar vein, we have another week we're going to recognize. Good morning. If you guys could just introduce yourselves and give your name and your address.
Travis Hattelstedt, 205 South Red Willow, project manager for the jail expansion project.
Scott Moore, Henry Carlson Company Superintendent, Parker, South Dakota.
Keith Collerson, J.E. Dunn, project superintendent, St. Paul, Minnesota.
Perfect.
So, we are the project team for the jail expansion addition project. It is National Safety Week, so we just wanted to come up here and just give a little discussion points on the importance of safety to us, and then some statistics on, just some safety statistics on why we celebrate this. So, turn over to Keith.
Thanks Travis. I'll try not to take up too much of your time here, not to upstage the warden here with...
It's impossible to do.
[laughing] It's also National Safety Week in construction. The reason for this is, back in 2014, a group of 31 national and global construction leaders got together, recognizing we had a problem with safety in construction, it's dangerous. And we have a goal of trying to lower our accident rates, eliminate them if it's at all possible. Some of the statistics that we've got here, our 1 in 10 construction workers are injured every year. Non-fatal injuries for the year 2015, which was the last year I have statistics for, totaled 71,730. That's nearly half the population of Sioux Falls. That's a lot of people. There were 937 fatalities in 2015 in construction. Nearly all construction workers will have at least one work-related injury over the course of their career. Over the course of a 45-year career, a construction worker has a 1 in 200 chance of being killed. That's a big risk, and we need to eliminate that. So what this group has done was they've started National Safety Week in order to seek an industry-wide transformation in safety, to focus on this. And that's the purpose, you'll see some banners put up on the buildings outside, we're doing a safety lunch Thursday at noon. This week is to recognize the trade partners and contractors' efforts to make our industry safer, and to continue in that effort. Hopefully, it probably won't happen in my lifetime, but hopefully at some point we'll eliminate injuries altogether. But that's what this is all about.
Thank you. I just want to, you know, thank you guys. I know that J.E. Dunn's a national leader in the safety movement, and Commissioner Barth and I have an opportunity to attend meetings with you folks a couple times a month, and safety is clearly important. It's always right at the front of our agenda, and I know you have a real strong commitment to sending people home to their families in as good a condition as they came to work in the morning, and we really do appreciate that, and thank you very much for that effort, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I would just like to comment on safety on the job too, that our own organization has had life-changing injuries over the years for our county employees. And I know in this community, we've had those same and worse injuries. And having worked climbing poles and digging holes for part of my life, you know, a moment's inattention can lead to a lifetime of problem, and it's just hard to keep your nose to the grindstone about safety. My, the telephone company where I worked though trained me so well, I can't drive without my seatbelt on, but almost all the time you see crashes where there is no seatbelt or anything. I'd rather wear a stocking cap than a hard hat, but keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you guys, thank you very much for coming over. Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners Nick Fosheim, Minnehaha County Economic Development Association, 200 North Phillips. So I'm here this morning just to talk a little bit about our bus tour, third annual, next week, so keep your meeting short next week here. We've got a jam-packed agenda. We'll be covering a lot of ground in a short amount of time, but again, keeping the focus on major employers, manufacturing, infrastructure, and then we'll be hitting some other items along the way. So, we'll be stopping at Marmen Energy and Brandon Midwest Railcar, talking with Sioux Valley Energy, and then a little bit of time with Department of Transportation on the Highway 100 Project. And then the final stop will be at the Foundation Park Development in northwest part of the city, just to learn a little bit more about what's going on there. So, looking forward to spending more time with you next week, but we're just finalizing some of those details with the agenda this week, we'll get that out to you towards the end of the week, so.
Thank you very much. It's proven to be a really great valuable use of our time, and we really appreciate you partnering with us and getting this organized, so thank you.
Our pleasure. Thanks, see you next week.
Thank you. Other public comment? Bob, were you going to come this morning?
I was thinking under new business, but if you'd like it now, that's just fine.
That'd be fine.
I know this is a little unorthodox, but I'm going to do something just to pass off to the commission and follow along. I'd like to pick you up in the end too, it's not that it's confidential, but it is a little...
Every day I work, a tree dies.
Good morning Commissioners Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. Last week, I had an opportunity to go out to Denver and attend a cybersecurity conference. And it was, let me set the stage for this here, in 2017, after the election, the sheriff summoned a bunch of us together to meet over at the Public Safety Building there, I mean at the Law Enforcement Center, and I was introduced to a person that was in charge of the Fusion Center. And election security and other cybersecurity things were at the foremost of it, but the big thing that he told me to do is join this MSIAC, which is the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center. And since then, they've also added EI, ISAC, and that is Election Infrastructure ISAC, of which I'm primarily concerned with. There's a little sheet on the front there, it kind of tells you a little bit of what it is. It is underneath the Department of Homeland Security. When I was offered this opportunity to go, the Department of Homeland Security paid for my flight and my room out there, and so I was really grateful for that part of it, because I didn't actually have it in my budget this year to do that. If you go to the next sheet, you can see the, that is the agenda of the meeting that I went to. There were a lot of events, I was busy from Sunday until Wednesday at noon. The days were long, but they were very interesting. And if you've got any questions about some of the items that I did on there, there was more than I could go to. But we started at 7:30 in the morning, did a lot of networking with other people, and we usually got over about 5:30, so it was a full day. My wife went out there with me, because I've got two weddings coming up, and so it cost me to get these wedding dresses, so, but I didn't have a lot of time to go shopping downtown Denver. And it snowed there as well, while you guys were getting rain back here. But that is, that was the, that's the agenda to what we did. And a couple of things that were big takeaways that are very interesting to me was, Gerald, do you need one of these? Okay, all right. But one of the things that a lot of places are employing for internet security is Albert sensor. And the state of South Dakota got two of them, these Albert sensors this year, and one of them is over the BIT, the Bureau of Information and Technology, and the other one is set up to our total vote voter registration system. And it's an interesting concept, because there's a lot of private network sensors that will look at something and tell you if it's infected, or if it's suspect, and it will pull it out. But the advantage to the Albert one is, is that if you've got a questionable email or a contact or something's going on, this, the security monitoring can identify that. They can put it, they can lock it up and send it in for analysis, and they put it into what's called a sandbox, that they can reverse engineer it, and they can find things out about it. And if it is malicious, they will get back to you and tell you that, and then they will also add that to their database and compare it to other jurisdictions that have got these malicious emails out there. So the Albert network security monitoring is something that the city of Sioux Falls is very interested in, as well as I am, and I've been in discussions with Monty about that, don't know how we're gonna, you know, how that's going to go forward, but it is a very interesting concept, and I believe it would add one more level of internet security to what the county already has. And I would, I would tell you that after listening to what other counties have out there, we're very fortunate to have the IT department that we do have, they're very good here. The next page is the DARPA, which is the Defense Advanced Research Project Agency, and they have given $10 million to a Portland, Oregon company, and they've come forward with a microprocessor that's supposed to be bulletproof. And this is still going through the testing process, I understand the Idaho National Laboratory had this for a while, and if you want your nuclear reactor looked at, Idaho National Laboratory, they're the kind of guys that would do that. But they, they're testing this here, this $10 million voting system will also be looked at by the hackers out in, out in the DEFCON hacking convention this year, so I don't know what those kids, those folks are going to come up with out there. But I'm kind of hanging my hat on this thing, and I don't know the timeline as this DARPA, as this voting system unfolds. It's open source, which means anybody can look at the source, and it's also designed so that if you want to go back and check your ballot for, to see if it was done correctly, you can do that. So I think it would, it's maybe the next step for going on there. The other, going on in election security. The other thing that I would tell you that's interesting is the machinery that we have, the election machinery is adaptable for this, but you know, it needs tested out, probably needs certified by the state of South Dakota, I don't know that for a fact, and ESNS would also have to be in agreement to put this on their voting machines. And you know, you start running up against proprietary things that they've paid millions of dollars to do, and then along comes the, you know, somebody else with something that they think might work on their voting machines, it's a contentious thing to look at. The other thing that I found really interesting, and I'm going to be working with the Fusion Center, the state of South Dakota Secretary of State, is this Tabletop the Vote 2019. And what that is, is an exercise, is a tabletop exercise, and right now, if there is a plan out there for pandemonium on election day, I'm not aware of it, and I think that this tabletop exercise will at least give us some broad outlines as to what to do if certain scenarios come up that threaten the election on election day or leading up to it. And so that is one of the other things that I wanted to focus on with you. So, three things, the Albert system, the DARPA Secure Voting System, and the Albert sensors were things that I brought back that I felt were important. There were over 700 attendees out at this thing, there was a lot of different levels of security that were presented. I came away from that convention with the idea that having layers of security at different levels is the safest way to go. I also come away from the idea that if you're worried about your social security number, your bank accounts, all that, it's all out there. That ship has left the dock, it's out there and it's a matter of time before, there's so much of it that the crooks can't figure out, you know, how to do it en masse, so they pick one at a time. It was kind of frightening in that regard, but it was also that we're aware of it as a nation, we're working forward to, you know, sharing information and focusing on cybersecurity. The other thing that I noticed was a lot of, a lot of other jurisdictions have hired a separate security analyst, a security person in their IT department. And I know Monty has a position, looking at, looking at his budget, that's not been filled, and he may be thinking about getting a security director, internet security director, I don't know that, but it's worth thinking about if he does come forward and ask you, because the time may be at hand, I'm not certain about that, so. That's kind of my, it's kind of my presentation of a very interesting conference that I went to. It was an eye-opener for me, I've been focusing a lot on a lot of different things out there, and I'd open myself up to any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Bob, I heard on the national news that one county in Florida had issues in the last general election and lost control of stuff. Thank goodness we've not had this problem in South Dakota. Have you heard of any other counties that had that issue?
Well, you know, originally, before the election, shortly after that, they reported 21 states had had their voter registration systems tried to get hacked into.
Attacked.
But it's all of them. They know that it's all of them today. And the one in Florida they actually got into, the one in Chicago, in Cook County, they actually got into, and part of one in New Jersey, they actually got into.
Did I win the election in Chicago again?
Pardon me?
Nothing.
Yeah, it is a Democrat stronghold I have. So yeah, there was, there was things that happened, I don't, from, I would say it's pretty much an agreement that it did not affect the vote tabulation. The disinformation campaigns that went on probably influenced some things, they're going to be back again this year in spite of what Facebook, Twitter, all these public-facing platforms, you know, all the garbage they can put out there. And I would only hope that if somebody is preparing themselves for an election, that they dig deep and be very skeptical about things that they read on the internet.
Anything else?
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming, and we appreciate the work that you're doing, and I think that none of us can afford not to be increasingly vigilant about these issues, so we appreciate it.
I would also add that there was a county out there, and I can't remember which one it was, but they had ransomware get infected into their system. And they didn't pay the ransomware, but it's cost them $12 million to straighten out and to set up things, and this ransomware got it back into their backups. And I would also tell you that, I always knew this, but I did not know to the extent of what the vulnerability was, but it's all these endpoint users, all these computer terminals that we have out here in the county, those are the points that people come into most likely. It's not this big zero-day hack from Russia where they come in, they sit and patiently wait, and instead of hacking, it's more like a blink, the way they come in, and they're quiet about it, they're patient about it, and they wait for things to fill in, and then they go ahead identifying those things and being proactive and taking the steps to stop them is the thing. And layers of security, like I said, you've got to have it at the state, you've got to have it at the city, you've got to have it at the county, all these different layers of IT protection are the way to do it. And we're never going to win. It's always going to be, are we staying ahead of these people? It's kind of like whack-a-mole with a race added into it. It's kind of a scary thing, but that's the way it is for the time being, so.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public comment? If not, you take us to regular business. First item is a presentation on the Department of Equalization. Good morning Chris.
Good morning Commissioners, Chris Lilla, Equalization Director. We've submitted our PowerPoint and PDF for you to look at ahead, and I got to give Kyle some props for this, he put this together for me, kind of on short notice, assist the State's Attorney's Office. So with that, it's just kind of a broad overview of what our office does and handles and deals with. So the starting point of the first page, the title page there is the oath of our office, and I would just like to state that myself and staff, we take this to heart, you know, we take an oath that we will value all properties at their full and true cash value, we do it impartially, we do it to the best of our knowledge. Obviously, there's mistakes, and anytime we have an opinion, that's what our value is, it's an opinion of value, so there's always discrepancies, or someone else has a counter opinion of that. So thus, we have the appeals process and things like that. So, it's a very sensitive topic when we deal with taxation, that we put values on properties, obviously not everyone agrees with that, so. But we take that oath to heart, so moving on page two then. Some of the things that we do is we maintain and update county data, we analyze every sale that happens within the county, we assess all real estate for taxation purposes, it's ad valorem, it means according to value, other than ag land, which is valued at productivity. We track all development growth, we administer a slew of exemption programs, we'll touch on a few of those. Also, we work with planning and development and analyze future projects for valuation Again, some of this is statistical data, some of this is general knowledge. Minnehaha County is the largest county in the state, about 188,000 people, we've got just over 73,000 individual taxable parcels in the county, I think it's 73,149 right now today. With that, that is all ag land, all commercial properties, all mobile homes, all houses. Any real estate in the county, we have our hand on it, or we have our hand on the pulse of it as the best as we can with what we're provided. With that, each individual property has a detailed file with that. When was it bought, when was it sold, how big is it, what's its legal description, what's its value history, what's its tax history, any exemptions associated with that parcel, we have pictures, we have sketches, we have soil inventories, I mean, it's, if we had individual files, hard files, I could almost fill this room. You know, luckily, we have a lot of information scanned and stored in a digital document server, so. With that, with each one of those, there's an identification number, that's a specific number to that parcel, there's a map unit ID number, that identifies the location of that within the county. That has become a little bit fragmented, it's not as accurate as I would like to see it, and some of that is you run out of, anytime you have a numbering sequence, and you have a volume of parcels like that, you run out of gaps in between when new parcels happen, you know, between A and D, and all of a sudden you have five parcels, well, you've got to have A sub 1, A sub 2, things like that, so run out of it. Again, current property value information and history, all sales, sketches, also inspection notes. We try and keep detailed notes, anytime we make a visit, anytime we do a market change, that's so we can explain to the public or the taxpayer when they come in, why did my value change? Well, this is why, this is what, this is how, so a lot of work goes into that. Next page is the sales. You can take a look at these charts here. Typically, we are dealing with around 7,000 sales annually, so those are all transfers. Not all of those are what we consider to be good sales. A transfer is anytime a husband sells to a wife, adds a wife's name, goes into a business name, things like that. 7,000 transfers, we are concerned with in our office, we track all of those and keep that record, as well as the register of deeds. What we are concerned with is what we call the good sales, those are the arms-length transactions, those are the ones that are advertised, those are the ones that, there's no relation between the buyer and seller, there's no pressure to buy or sell by either individual, and they act prudently with knowledge of their transaction. Those are the ones we're concerned with, those are the ones that we analyze and put weight to, and figure out what, we're valued here, what are they selling for? Are they selling for more than what we have? If that's the case, there's an indication that we need to increase our values to keep up with market. Again, we value at full and true cash value based on market, so we value in the rear and project going forward. So those are what we are concerned with. So as you look at those, you know, 7,000 transfers, we screen off, a couple thousand of those, we're down to 4,000 that we analyze each year. Then you take a look in the sales dollars over the years, and the number of sales hasn't happened, but look at how the values of those sales has increased. People's values are going up because sales are going up, that's what our job is, and so when people come to us every year and say, why did my value go up? Nothing sold, I don't know, here's the chart statistically, it is increasing annually, so. Next page, we assess each real estate for property for taxation, and again, each property has its own specific valuation in relation to what is it, what does it have, how big is it, what is its use. We annually evaluate the level of assessment of each taxing jurisdiction, that's just breaking those market changes and sales back to each individual, so when we analyze, we're analyzing a town, we're analyzing a neighborhood within Sioux Falls, we're analyzing a commercial property in a neighborhood in Sioux Falls to try and equalize those. And lastly, when we assign a value, and we send out that assessment notice on March 1st, the public has an opportunity to disagree with us, and they can come forward, and it's our job to defend our values and prove why our values are there. We do that at a local board, at a county board with you folks, and also if a person doesn't get what they desire through that process, they can move forward to the Office of Hearing Examiners in peer, or we can go directly to Circuit Court. So we are done this year with the local board and the county board, and we are waiting on any OHE or Circuit Court appeals to move forward. Have not heard of any yet, so hopefully we don't have any. Next slide is, we assess real estate for property taxation and the valuation types. First one mentioned is ag land, is assessed based off of the soil type and top dollar for productivity. It's the only value in the county that is not valued at what it sells for is ag land, and the legislators created a law to say that productivity value is market value, therefore they didn't have to change a million other laws, they made one to fit it in, so it's within the confines of the codified law. So with that, right now for 2019, all crop soils begin at $4,350 an acre, so that's the most we can be, and then they get rated against their soil rating, and then the number of acres of that soil type within their parcel, it all gets added. It all gets added up, and here's the value of your property. Um, if it's a grass soil, we begin at two thousand. And then again, against its soil rating, total number of soils added up, that's your value for your property. Um, residential properties, we're typically valued based on the cost to build it new, less depreciation, um, and then add in the land value. And then we compare that to the market. We say, here's what it costs to build, take out any age or obsolescence. How does that sell? And then we adjust that up or down. Um, commercial properties, we use, generally, we always wanna look at three approaches for those. The cost to build new, less depreciation, add inland. Um, the market approach, what does it sell for? But anything that's income-producing, we can use that income analysis to correlate our value and make sure that, that we're in line, so. Again, you can look, the next slide, we can look at development growth. Again, about seven thousand building permits annually we deal with. Some of those are a little misconstrued. It's probably realistically more in the line of forty-five hundred. We have a lot of reshingle permits, a lot of plumbing permits that are duplicate permits and things like that. But, um, either way, there's, there's a good amount here. Um, you can see the numbers have trended down a little bit from two thousand fourteen, and I don't, I'd be curious to go back a little farther and see. But they are on the uptick again now for 2018. The big thing to note is, take a look at the next graph, which is, the number of permits is increasing slightly, but the value of those permits, there's some big projects going on out there. That's the growth. That's instrumental for us to track. We track all growth. If there's a building permit, if it's new in the county, we had a value of A last year, and they take out a building permit, and we arrive at a value of B this year, that difference in those values, we track, and we input that in for, as growth. Growth is what allows you or the taxing jurisdiction to increase your budgets. So our office is very fundamental in how much money do you have available? We don't shoot them, we don't do anything. We, we assess them fair and we assess them equal, but that new value, no one else does that but our office. We track that. So when you look at your budgets, you say, last year we had a budget of this, we can increase it by CPI. That what comes from our office. So again, there, those numbers for growth are used to determine your budgetary limitations for cities, counties, and public schools. Um, the next one, we deal a lot with assisting the public with exemptions and tax reduction, um, programs. So there's a lot of them out there. There's a lot of detail with those. I, I've listed, or Kyle has listed, I should say, a few of those. The owner occupied, that's probably our biggest, and I'll put a shout out just to anybody in the public. If you own your home and you live in your home, and it's your principal residence, and you own it by November first, you need to apply for owner occupied. Um, that gives about a twenty to thirty percent reduction in the school portion of the levy. So important as a homeowner that they come in and sign up with us. Even if they've done it through a closing or a transfer, I would still encourage them to come in. I'd rather have two or three applications than not have one, so. Elderly freeze is our next one, or disabled. Um, again, we deal a lot with that one, and that's, that's an income-based, um, program. If, if you meet the income threshold and you're above the age of sixty-five, there's a possibility you can have your value frozen for tax purposes. Um, discretionary formula, that's for new construction, new commercial construction. It allows a, a six-year, seven-year reduction in the value. Disabled vetan, disabled veterans, renewable energy credit, religious, educational, charitable, and benevolent exemptions, agricultural exemption, repair and buffer strip, historical tax moratorium, paraplegic exemption and reductions. You know, there's a lot of things that we deal with, so, um, we do our best to stay on top of those. But again, the public, most of those have to be started from the taxpayer point of view. They have to come in and request information or make application. A lot of them, we cannot do on our own, so. Some of the goals of our office, you know, when I was hired down here, there's been a transition to get out of an old DOS-based program into a, into a future program. We're moving forward and trying to push forward with that. Currently today, we still have about twenty-eight thousand parcels in an older system that is going to advance forward. Goal of that is, hopefully this year, maybe next year, with that then, that would also promote us to move into the next version of tax software. Potentially, the Incode Tax Program, which would be great as the auditor and treasurer are already on there. It will help our office to intermingle and transfer data over our years fluently and easily between those offices. From my perspective, it would make data entry and tracking and, um, reporting much simpler than, than the current one that I have, so. We will also look at continuing to collect all sales data, analyze. Once we can get into these softwares, I can also hopefully model and, and drill down a little bit deeper into the sales analysis, um, so I can compare more like properties a little closely, rather than a, a broad brush stroke. Hopefully, I can get a little more detailed with that. And lastly, advancing forward onto these programs and a few efficiency changes, hopefully we can start a, a new reappraisal cycle. Right now, the, the reappraisal has been moving these, these, uh, parcels forward in software, and the actual physical reappraisal of properties that haven't had building permits has been neglected, so I, my goal is to restart that cycle. Um, the next slide is just some sales analysis. Um, if you look at the bottom, the 2016 assessed value, we had six hundred and fifty-two billion dollars, and then we had seven hundred and eighty-six million in, in sales, so we had a ratio of eighty-two percent. So we're a little bit low. State law says we have to be between eighty-five and a hundred on our ratio. So again, 2016, we had six hundred and fifty-two billion of sales, of value of sales, but it sold for seven hundred and eighty-six. Too low. So our office then has to make adjustments. We have to isolate what town, what township, um, what type of property, what neighborhood. We make those adjustments, and then we, we increased our value. So when you go to the 2017 assessed value, that is actually, we've improved from the six fifty-two to the seven fifteen. So that was our fix. So if you, if you do a ratio of the seven hundred and fifteen to the seven eighty-six, we started out at eighty-two, but we actually fixed everything, and we arrived at a ninety-one. So that's what we do every year. Um, so this year, we looked at our sales, we did all of our neighborhood changes, all of our values, we increased. So we're here, we fixed our ratio. Now, next year, now we'll go a whole year and find out how, what did the market do? Did it go up or did it go down? And more than likely, um, you will see another ratio. We, we jump ahead, we get it into that, into compliance between eighty-five and a hundred. Then a year moved forward, the market goes up, we lose a little bit of, of that length or that legway, and then we study that and see how much and where we need to increase the, the following year, so. It's a lot of information in short order. I'll open it up if you have any questions.
Harzki.
Quick comment and a question. Building permits in 2014 are way high because of a hailstorm and the number of people that needed to
Sure.
Get building permits to
Lots of shingles.
Repair roofs and, you know, replace roofs and that type of thing. Twenty-eight thousand parcels remain on, yes, four hundred. Are there seventy-three thousand total?
Seventy-three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine.
Okay. Um, have you put together a timeline on how long that's gonna take?
No.
Okay.
I haven't. Um, I'm very hopeful. We, I've been really holding on the brakes to really jump into it because, A, we had assessments go out, the appeals. We are very close, um, May, the third Monday in May here, I have to have our abstract to peer, which is our final of our 2019 value. Once I have that, um, I, I think we've got two neighborhoods left of commercial properties that are literally gonna be grueling. The appraisers have to look at detail for detail, one program to another, transfer, match, make them equal. Townships, the rural, that's gonna be a little bit grueling because it isn't just features. It's going to be actually looking at imagery and looking at sketches of parcel from one program to another, looking at all the details of each building. Gonna be kind of grueling. The residential, which is our biggest, um, portion of, of properties and that, I am very hopeful that in the next week or a couple of weeks, we can sit down and pull program to program on a characteristics because they're the same, and find out what's in one program that's not in another, and do it as a computer analysis. And I'm hopeful that about three-quarters of these can be basically one-felled swoop. We know what parcel, and we know what needs to be transferred, or what isn't equal between them, and really move it forward. And then I can direct some assets to assisting in the other areas. But right now, we aren't able to do any of that because we don't wanna mess with anything until we lock down our numbers and get finalized and get our abstract put together. So everything has been kind of put on hold until now, until we can dig into it.
One, and one last thing. A lot of turnover in your office, mostly due to retirements and losing some well-tenured employees. So I know that, um, in, yourself included
Right.
Being here just due to that. So thank you for the work you've done, and I know you have a lot to get through with the learning curve and training and that type of thing.
Yes, and I'll tell you, from my perspective, coming in here, there's three or four in the, in the office that have probably maybe thirty years total, combined thirty-five years, and then the rest are two or, two year, three years or less, and a lot a year. So, but I am thoroughly impressed with the staff that, that we have here. Even the ones that have only been here six, eight months, I mean, and when I talk with them and work with them, I am just blown away at the caliber that, that we have.
Excellent.
And I could not do my job without the staff that's here. There is no way. So I, I wanna give a big shout out to, to all of those. And, and, um, great selections have been made either prior to me or, or my hires since I've been here. I don't have a complaint about any of them, so they're doing a fantastic job and, and doing the best we can with what we have. So, every day gets better.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth.
Gerald, go.
No, go ahead.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, thank you for, uh, those commendations to your staff that are, and your predecessor. I appreciate it. Two things. One is, have we had many people apply for, uh, a buffer zone?
No.
Thing? Have we had any?
Not this year. I can't tell you in the, in the past years. And, and every year, that's an annual one, so if they did in the past, they aren't this year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other thing is, what, uh, what should a citizen do as they look forward to their November first valuation this year?
What should they do?
Yeah, should they, should they make sure that they
Well, they should question it, first and foremost. You know, that is an important document. It doesn't come in the mail for you to put in a drawer or throw away. When you get that assessment notice, look at it. Look at that value, and then ask yourself, if I was to sell my house today, is this what I would sell it for? If the answer is yes, or more, you're good.
If it's more, they won't tell you though.
If it's more, they won't call me and say, hey, I think you assessed me a little low. Can you come out and review that? We have had it. We have had it. Um, generally, though, those people are looking at selling in the near future and think that getting a higher assessed value will help them and aid them in their sale price, so. Generally, it's the other way. But, but if, if somebody looks at their value and they feel it is too high, and they would, would sell it for less, they should contact me. Um, we will sit down and, and figure out the what, the where, the why, you know, why do you think it's less? And, and our job, I've sat there and told people I've looked through everything, and I cannot come down to their value, and they've recently bought it or things like that, and I've, I've told them, I can't do anything for you. Everything I have is statistically right, the characteristics are there. But if, if we were reversed, I would appeal my value. I can't get there. We gotta put all our properties in a bowl. Not everything fits in that bowl. There's always an outlier, some way, one way or another. So are you the outlier? If you are, we'll try and fix it. We're not out to get anybody. We want to be fair. We wanna be equal.
One more item, I guess, that occurred to me. So, you know, we're, currently, we've got a pretty wet year. And, you know, there are a lot of folks out there who are growing fish instead of soybeans. Uh, how long does it have to be submerged, and what's their process to come forward?
Yeah, unfortunately, there isn't much we can do with them on a one-off, a two-off years. There is an inundated by floodwaters program out there, which is another one that we would administer. That requires an application. The, the landowner or farmer needs to come in and provide FSA data. It needs to be inundated for three consecutive growing seasons before we can take action on it. And, and I wanna stress that inundated is not saturated. Right now, we, we're saturated. There is some water, there is some land that's inundated. Will it be inundated in a month? Probably not. Is it saturated in a month? Absolutely. Um, a lot of that saturation is taken up in that Table One Soil Survey. If it's got a class three W, four W, five W, subsoil type, that means it's wet. It's already in your rating. That's why the rating on that crop soil is probably a point five and not a point eight. You're already getting a thirty percent reduction because the soil survey says this type of soil and its location is wet. It's not the best suited for raising crops. So I just wanna stress that there's a big difference between inundation and saturation. We're gonna have a lot of questions on saturation, and there's not much I can do.
Commissioner Benega.
Just a couple of comments and a couple of questions that maybe can be pondered for future discussion. But first of all, thank you for the fact you and your staff probably, uh, gave us the least number of appeals that we've ever had that I can remember for fifteen years, probably. I don't know, just been here longer than we have, but at least that long. So thank you for that because obviously, uh, the system works and people still have their voice, but, uh, we didn't have many people expressing that voice or of concern, so we appreciate that a lot. Secondly, from just an informational kind of thing, is there a way that at some point in the future, we can talk about, uh, informing the public about the difference between an assessed value and their tax value? Because that always comes up in the conversation regardless of where we go. So that's a, something that you can ponder if you'd like. Same issue with elderly freezes because they, when they get that first freeze, they think that they've done it. They can't, they don't need to do it again, and it becomes a discussion point that frankly gets missed, creates some additional work. And the last thing, on the statistical values that you put together, uh, you talked about your range from eighty-five to a hundred. Is that done by category when you see that there's differences, or you do it just as a gross dollar amount?
Nope, that eighty-five to a hundred, um, level of assessment, that's a county-wide number. That's, that's everything. Short of ag. Ag is out of that
Right.
Because we can't use that market. And then it goes back to those good sales. And that's everything from commercial, trailer houses, all of that.
Okay.
So the process kind of is, is we look at all of the sales, and then we, we start breaking those sales apart. But we take all the sales and we say, here's the total sale price of all of them, and here is our total assessed value of all of them. What's the ratio of that? Well, that's where it says it's a eighty percent or an eighty-five percent or whatever. And then we say, okay, we're low, or we're high, or whatever. And even if I came out and I was at ninety-two percent, I'm still gonna break it apart. I'm still, I'm not gonna say, well, our level of assessment's ninety-two, we're done. I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna look because maybe I have a neighborhood out there that's at, at seventy, and I have a neighborhood out there that's at a hundred and thirty percent. Well, these need to come down, these need to come up. So we, we still need to balance it. So, so that's a county-wide. That's a requirement by Department of Revenue, county-wide. But we break the, whoops, excuse me, we break those sales apart by the towns, by the townships, by the types, you know, the residential, the commercial. And we, we tweak some, that's why some people go up eight percent, some people go up ten, some people go down three. Cause we're fixing each little subgroup, and then we reconstruct them and put them all back together and compare that total value then against the total sale price to find out, did we move our number into compliance? And that's where we move from an eighty up to a ninety-two. And then we sit for a year and wait and see what the market's done, and lose ground and do it again.
Appreciate the, uh, hard work and information.
Any, anything else?
I'd just like to piggyback on Commissioner, um, Benega's comment about the, and I, I think it's confusing, so I understand why people are confused. You know, the difference between the assessed value and the tax value, and, you know, you'd made the comment about growth and how growth is what helps fund some of the county operations, but that doesn't, I think people hear growth and they think growth means that my, value of my property went up.
Yes, yes. So I, I should, I should clarify on that a little bit, and that's a good, that's a good question. If your value of your home goes from a hundred and forty thousand or two hundred thousand to two hundred and forty thousand or two hundred and twenty thousand, if there's an increase in your home and you haven't done anything to it, the county can't use that increase in value to increase their budgets. That's called reappraisal. It's only new construction and things like that. So as your value goes up, goes up, and I always use a, I'll use a small-town Bruce, I always use that. If I had a million dollars worth of value in the town, and the, the city needed, you know, ten thousand dollar budget to, to run, that math goes through, and everybody needs to pay per thousand their share to fill this bucket of ten thousand. Well, in my job, if I went out there and I took, and I doubled everybody's house, and all of a sudden I have two million of value, if this bucket size didn't change, the levy in the middle goes down by half. So if you had to pay ten dollars per thousand, and I double everyone, well, that levy goes to five, and it still fills the same bucket. Your value doubles, but your taxes didn't change. So, it's a very, it's a moving target, but assessments going up don't necessarily mean taxes going up. Now, I'm not going to lie to you. Generally, they will. You know, there's a whole slew of things. Everybody would have to go up equally for your taxes not to change. That's not, that's never the case. You go up, somebody probably stayed the same or went down. Therefore, you're probably going to go up in taxes. The difference is, you can go up 20 percent in value. You may go up 1 percent in taxes when it falls out. It's not a direct ratio. So, I'm glad you brought that up.
Madam Chair, just follow on to his comment there. If the value of every property in the county went to $1, we would still collect the millions that we're authorized to collect.
Yeah, the budget, you would still collect it. It's just, all of a sudden, everybody, instead of paying $16 per thousand, now has to pay 2,600 per thousand to get the same amount of money.
The only thing I can say to that is, good luck explaining that in a simple format that people understand.
It's tough. It's tough.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate all the work that you and your staff do. I think that you guys did a great presentation. I learned a lot today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item 11, which we will consider a motion to authorize the chairperson to sign a settlement agreement between Minnehaha County. And I am not going to pronounce the names of these people correctly, so I'm going to let you do that, Maggie.
Well, I say Janjigan.
Janjigan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, commissioners. I have Margaret Gillespie, Deputy State's Attorney. I bring to you today, requesting approval of payments on this condemnation matter. And what you'll recall is, this was condemnation for roadway acquisition and temporary construction easements for road and bridge at highways 122 and 155 at that intersection. And so, what you'll recall is, I'm asking for approval of three payments. Two of the parties settled, as you'll recall, and two of the parties did not. So, if the board would approve payments, one payment is 36, 37, 34 to Armin Janjigan. Another payment is 36, 37, 33 to the estate of Gregory Janjigan. And then, payment of $1,277.33 to Bergy and Kao, excuse me, Bergy, Janjigan, and Kao Hashino. And you'll, I should inform you that there's a typo. One of the H lots was misnumbered. And so, I will fix that and have the chair sign the corrected document. Nonetheless, what we're asking today is approval of the payments and the settlement agreement. The last payment that I referenced, you'll recall, was the result of the jury verdict for the non-settling parties.
Any questions for Maggie?
Madam Chair, I appreciate the hard work that the State's Attorney's Office had to go through on this one because of, you know, the decedent involved, and some were living internationally. And to get agreement of, even with a jury, is great, and I appreciate it. I'll make a motion to have you sign that agreement based on the correction of the misprint or whatever.
Motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second.
Madam Chair, and authorize the payments.
And authorize the payments.
Ma'am.
Okay. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members.
That takes us to item 12. Consider authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement of participation with the Avera Pace Group Purchasing Program. Craig Dewey. Good morning.
Morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. It was brought to my attention about a month ago that the jail, as they are expanding their operations, are in need of redoing some of their jail medical area. And given that those supplies are very specialized, I became aware of Avera Pace, which is a purchasing group that private entities can belong to as well as public entities. In fact, the city of Sioux Falls, as well as the municipality of Leola, South Dakota, in northeastern South Dakota, are part of Avera Pace. And it's a voluntary purchasing group. There aren't any fees to participate. There aren't any upcharges on products. Those are all paid for by the vendors who choose to participate in selling the products. So, there are certain supplies that are exempt from bid laws in South Dakota, and medical supplies would be one of them. And so, that would be the purpose for participating in Avera Pace. The Juvenile Detention Center has also explored Avera Pace and has an interest in participating as well. So, if the commission elects to move forward with this agreement of participation, it would cover all entities under the Minnehaha County banner. And one benefit of participating in this group, when I visited with the city of Sioux Falls and checking references for Avera Pace, is they were able to get discounts as deep as 80 percent on certain products that they purchased that were exempt from public bid laws. So, that would certainly create value for the taxpayer in using dollars more efficiently. There are other products that Avera Pace offers that are subject to competitive bid laws. The county would still be obligated to do public bids. So, this does not change those laws that the county is bound by. This is a voluntary participation in the group that would be renewed annually. So, if for some reason you would elect to participate, and then next year, you're just not utilizing this purchasing group or not seeing value, you would not necessarily need to re-up that agreement. The county would still need to participate also in putting bids out for items or products that would need to be purchased that would fall under that statute. I would be happy to answer any other questions, though, if you would have them.
Questions for Craig? Commissioner Benega.
I'm going to have to abstain from this vote since we participate with the organization I work for is a member of that group. So, I don't want to...
It's like I'm going to have to either make a motion or second a motion then.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve this participation.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero with one abstention. Thank you, Craig. So, the next item is to consider a motion to authorize Change Order Number 5 for the jail expansion. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioner Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you is Change Order Number 5. These were two larger ticket items for us in the jail. One is radio repeaters, which is going to make a radio system possible through everything and make sure we can talk to people in the courthouse and all over the whole system at a cost of $153,197.2. The other is the property room revision and equipment at a cost of $131,440 for a total of $284,000. So, these two were both, we knew we had to take care of. We did not put them in the GMP because we weren't sure of where dollars are at. But we are fortunate, we're able to make our contingency dollars flow very well. And so, this is coming out of our contingency for two important projects.
Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth. Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Karski.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you very much. That takes us to liaison reports. Do you have any liaison reports today? Commissioner Barth.
The next hour is mine. Actually, I do have a couple. But first, I'll call up Bill Hoskins here, who wants to report on a conference that's coming to Sioux Falls.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sioux Land Heritage Museums. I'm here to just tell you, the Mountain Plains Museum Association, which is a museum professionals' association, is coming to Sioux Falls in 2020, September 2nd through the 5th. This is a meeting that the CVB has been working hard to get to Sioux Falls for a number of years. It's a great opportunity to highlight our community's museums, the pavilion, the Center for Western Studies, the zoo, the Sioux Land Heritage Museums. The attendees are usually 300 to 350 people. And the Mountain Plains region is the North and South Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Montana, Wyoming, Colorado, and New Mexico. So, geographically, it's a pretty big space, not as many museums here as in some of the other regions of the country. I've been asked to serve as one of the local co-chairs. Basically, a coordinator between the Mountain Plains Museum Association's Board and local planning for the meeting. I've got some experience. I served on the Mountain Plains Board in the past and also as president of the Association of South Dakota Museums. It, there's no fundraising involved. The Mountain Plains does all that for the meeting. They take care of registration. So, really, it's coordinating, helping with the program, evening what they call host committee activities in the evening, and really serving as a coordinator locally.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski.
Has this ever been here before, Bill?
It has. I think the last time was in 1983.
Oh, wow. Okay.
It was a little different community then than it is now.
Or Barth and I will help with the host room if you need help with it.
Awesome. What I'm really hoping is like an opening reception in the courtroom at the old courthouse museum.
A win-win. So, all right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for agreeing to do that. Commissioner Barth, you don't actually have a whole hour, though, so...
Metro Communications had a meeting. Gerald and I attended, representing us. And I'll just say that our share of the budget for 2020, it looks like it's going up $89,991. And Gerald was on the hiring team, and we have a new director.
We do. And I'm having a senior moment right now. I can't remember Scott's last name. McMahon. I'm sorry. But anyway, he is an outstanding candidate and was agreed to accept that position. He's from Watertown. He's been in the police department and has been the assistant police sheriff, or sheriff, police officer in the PSAP group. So, his background is extensive. He's been there for a number of years. And we're excited to have him start in about six weeks, I believe. So, it's great for our community and for the region.
Great. Commissioner Barth.
So, one last thing under liaison. The East Dakota Water Development District sent us a letter inviting our participation in a regional drainage conference. There's a diversity of treatment of tile drainage, and they want to discuss it. And I plan to go.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any other liaison? I would just report that I met last Friday with Suzanne Smith from Augustana Research Institute about the Homeless Advisory Board. And I think I was one of the last people that she's interviewing. They're running just slightly behind the calendar of the delivery of that report. But she hopes to have that done here, hopefully by the end of the month, to come back with some feedback on the Homeless Advisory Board, both the organization of that and information about how other like-sized cities in our area are tackling some of those problems. So, I'm really looking forward to getting that coming out. Okay. If there are no other liaison reports, that takes us to new business. Any new...
Madam Chair, I'd like to propose a revision of our ambulance ordinance. It's come to my attention that there is a part of it, which I don't think was in the spirit that Commissioner Benega and I intended when we made these revisions. We're going to put the text up here in just a moment. But in a situation where you might be having a private party, a wedding, a race, a rock concert, and chose to have an alternate provider than the one that has been given monopoly rights in the district, our intention, I believe, was that we would make the interloper report to the incumbent. But it was not to give the incumbent veto power over that. And so, if you look here on the third line in the text, it says, obtain the consent. And I'd like to revise that to take that out. Certainly, we want them to provide notice to the incumbent that they plan to have an ambulance at that Woodstock-type event. But I think having this gives, is the wrong interpretation that, as I recall us proposing this, Gerald. So, I'd like to get this ordinance change on our agenda for the next few weeks, if possible.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that up. If you work with Jason Guirman, and we'll get that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else under new business? Old business? If not, it entertains a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
Let's go to recess.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will take about a 10-minute break and reconvene about 10:15. So, thank you.